We'll call the order of tonight's Palago Committee. No, I'm just kidding. Casa Grande City Council regularly scheduled meeting for July 8th. We have an invocation tonight. Pastor Elgin is here. And then we'll remain standing and do the pledge afterwards.
Nisa, would you mind?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Chief. I really like praying for the City Council because this is a city of faith. It has a lot of faith. If you go on churchfinder.com, you'll come up with 40 churches. And I know that not every church that I know is on that list. But faith is shared, something we share together. Faith in our future, faith for our city government, for our police, for our first responders, faith in each other, and most importantly, faith in God. So sometimes all we have is faith, sometimes all it takes is faith. Pray with me, please. Dear Lord, fill us with your faith. A faith for the bright future for Casa Grande, a future for our children and for our neighbors. Bless us with health and prosperity, peace and grace. Keep all city, county, state employees safe in their duties and aware in their hearts that as the Apostle Paul echoed to our Lord Jesus in saying, "Any authority that has been given them is ultimately granted by you." Let that inspire us to do your will and keep the faith. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mary. I was impressed that you did it on the phone.
Mayor, on the City Council regular meeting minutes from June 17th, I move that we...
Let me do the roll call first.
Oh, okay.
All right, so on the phone tonight, we have Mary Cortson, Councilmember Mary Cortson. And Donna McBride is absent, so would somebody like to offer an...
I move to excuse.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to excuse Donna McBride from tonight's City Council meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so please note, Mary or Mary, Donna's been excused.
Senator.
And that Mary's on the phone. Now...
Back to the minutes.
Back to the minutes.
I move approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes from June 17th as they're presented, and that we accept for the record the Historic Preservation Commission minutes from April 22nd and the Board of Appeals minutes from March 13th as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded twice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Claims against the city? D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated June 12th through July 1st, 2019 as presented.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the claims of June 12th through July 1st. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we can pay our bills. Meeting approval agenda, any changes, Mr. Rames?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Staff has just one item to report on this evening, Mr. Mayor, from an agenda perspective. And if you look at the agenda, we actually have a rescheduled regular meeting from our July 1 that we'll be asking the council to approve here in a second. And then we have a special meeting that's scheduled to follow our rescheduled regular meeting. On that special meeting, we have two executive session items. And while the public cannot participate in executive session items, I did want to make a point for the public and to the council that we will not be considering the discussion and consultation related to the FAA order regarding skydiving at the Casa Grande Municipal Airport and a potential proposed agreement. That will be rescheduled for a future meeting.
Anyone else in the council? Okay.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the amended meeting agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. All right, next item on our agenda is item G, which is our consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be a separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes here or anything you want to remove?
No, I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item H, which is public comments. So this is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Obviously, these items are not on the agenda, so we cannot comment on your comments, but and/or give, we can give direction to staff to do further research and/or meet with you if you have a concern that we need to address. So I will open the floor. I don't have any cards, so I don't know if anybody had it or wanted to address the council. Please come forward, state your name and your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Would appreciate it. Thank you. Hi, Lindsey.
My name is Lindsey Goss. Address 3978 North Deadwood Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona 85122. Mayor McFarland, members of the council, as I'm sure you know, there was a fatal skydiving accident on Friday which involved the local skydiving company. This was tragic, and my heart goes out to the family members of the instructor and the student who survived, as well as her family. In the past, I had said that it was not a matter of if someone would die, but a matter of when. Unfortunately, it has now happened. Now it will only be a matter of when it will happen again and how many will die. I am asking, please do not allow a drop zone on the airport. I'm not against skydiving. I jumped myself back in 2004 in a different state. I just don't want any involvement in it, and I absolutely do not want it going on in my own backyard. I do not want the heartache of seeing someone die. I left my former job as a victim advocate partially because of the sadness of death notifications and other duties that came with it became too much. I did not come back to Goss Hawk to see more death. I want to look at our proper, I want to look out at our property with my daughter and see wonder and amazement of planes flying, not sadness and anguish from lives lost and memories of bodies hitting the ground or another airplane. If you allow a drop zone to be placed on the airport, there will be an accident out there. If I am in the vicinity, it will be my duty as a human being to go help someone in need. I do not want to be part of that, but I can't turn my back on it. I spend the majority of my time out there at the airport, and I do not want to be haunted by a bad memory of someone dying on my property or in my backyard. Please do not allow a drop zone to be placed on the airport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the floor, and we'll move to item I1, Consider Ordinance Number 3138. And we have Mr. Hardesty.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Staff recommends the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Core Construction for the expansion of the main library at a guaranteed maximum price of $765,100. This project involves the expansion of the main library located at 449 North Dry Lake On January 2nd, 2018, the mayor and city council approved an ordinance selecting Core Construction to provide pre-construction services in the first phase of a design-build contract. Since selecting this contractor, Core Construction has worked with city staff and an architect to finalize the construction drawings. Hunt and Caraway is the architectural firm that Core chose to be their partner. Both Hunt and Caraway and Core Construction have extensive experience with new library projects within the state. You know, a brief history of the Casa Grande Public Library. The Women's Club was the library from 1913 to 1958. Then it moved to the Boy Scout Lodge, the Dorothy Powell Senior Center, and then the main library at its present location since 1999. In addition, we have the Vista Grande Library since 2009. The expansion goals, or the goals of the expansion project are several. It will provide additional meeting space for the public, provide additional study rooms which currently are not available at the main library. It will provide the staff with more flexibility and ability to serve the public requests with more efficiency, and it will invest our historical development impact fees into something that the citizens can utilize. The guaranteed maximum price does include all items necessary to complete the budget or complete the project. A construction contingency of 3% is included in addition to an owner's contingency of nearly $10,000. The project, I've got a few renderings here to show you. There will be some exterior work done in order to create this space. This is a rendering of the additional meeting space that would be created. The actual furniture that would be selected has not been selected yet, so the room could be configured into several different ways to utilize for the public. This is just another look at the meeting room. Look at the, how the hallway would function with the expansion project coming through and the study rooms that would be available. There are study rooms available at the Vista Grande Library, which are heavily utilized, and our staff feels like that we would really expand our programs over there by having these study rooms available. There is one other item or several other items of note. There would be $720,000 worth of development impact fees invested into this project. The library has also solidified a grant of $45,100, which you have already approved in a previous action that would be invested into this project. Gravity Research, which is currently the project manager at the Recreation Center, and the Carr McNapp Project would also be working on this project. And it is in the current CIP that has been presented in the budget. And with that, I'd take questions.
Steve, is the entrance moving?
The in...
Are you adding an entrance?
Oh, one other. Library Manager Amber Kent is here to answer specific questions. So I'm going to turn this over to Amber.
Bye, Amber.
Hi. We're actually going to add an entrance, so there will be two entrances. Not the south side, the east side and the north side where it is now.
Oh, okay. So on the parking lot, right off the parking lot?
So where the patio is right now, that's where the expansion is.
Okay.
So this particular rendering here is looking in from the east side.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'd be utilizing our current parking lot with the entrance right through there.
Yeah, that's good.
I had a question, Mayor.
Sure, I'm sure.
No, that's fine. I just wondered if Amber's excited.
I'm always excited. Anything that we can do to make the library better gets me excited. And the public really needs the extra meeting rooms.
Oh, yeah, no, it's very nice.
Matt, I'm glad to see the new meeting rooms and they all have Wi-Fi, I'm sure, so everyone can go there and meet.
Oh, yes.
And you have Wi-Fi at the library. I'm just kind of letting everybody know that, so it'd be a good place to do it for free, Wi-Fi.
Absolutely.
And the one thing, I was reading through the contract, I just had a question about the landscaping. It was kind of strange, it said they were going to provide the materials and we were going to do landscaping maybe, or...
Yeah, we're trying to value engineer the project...
Okay.
...to meet the budget. And so that's an area that landscaping, you can spend a lot of money, which our staff can utilize some of their skills and try to save money and stay within our budget.
That's what I was hoping you said.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna, it's gonna get done.
Correct, correct.
Who's gonna do it?
It will not be left unlandscaped.
All right, perfect.
Just a comment, I'm excited too, Amber. You know, just because, you know, I think we forget how often these facilities are used. And, you know, it's nice to spread these amenities throughout the community, and I think, you know, it's good to have, you know, a lot of people use Vista Grande because they have the meeting rooms, so I think this is going to be a great addition, like you said, Matt, to have the public Wi-Fi. A lot of people don't have Wi-Fi, and so they count on, you know, going to these areas. And so having the meeting rooms, you know, people can go in, have meetings, tutoring, whatever it is. So I was really excited when I first read that, I was like, God, it seems like we just remodeled the library, 2013, 14, but, you know, these are great additions, and so there's probably never enough. But it's a nice central location, and I think it's going to get a lot of use. So thank you for everything you do. I'm excited about this addition.
Thank you.
According to these pictures, it'd be a lot of tall, good-looking people there.
Yeah.
I thought I saw you on the... All their models there.
Any other questions, comments?
They always do that.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Amber. Thank you, Steve. Okay, I'll consider a resolution, excuse me, an ordinance number 3138, please.
Ordinance number 3138, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing a construction contract with Core Construction to provide construction of the main library expansion project, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $765,100, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3138 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 3138. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Herman. I'm sorry, Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, item I2 is ordinance, considering ordinance number 3139. Mr. Chief.
Thanks, Mayor.
With the new facial hair.
Staff recommends that mayor and council authorize staff to execute contracts and issue purchase orders for the purchase of materials and services for the upfitting of five police vehicles, and authorize funds for various contingent items. The total amount requested authority would be $175,752.21. Actions requesting authorization for the purchase of these vehicles have already been submitted separately and previously approved. The request is to provide for obtaining the technology equipment and upfitting costs to make these vehicles patrol-ready. Should be noted, there's five vehicles total, three of which are patrol vehicles, two are for canine, and these will require a different combination of equipment based on the tasks they perform. The cost breakdown of $175,000 is $36,582.17 for five new radios and radio equipment, $14,226.55 for technology equipment that consists of two ruggedized computers and GPS antennas. We'll only be needing two computers, since three of the vehicles will use existing laptops from the vehicles that are replaced. And all five vehicles will receive new GPS antennas for $574.95. Big cost is going to be $124,943.49 for the actual vehicle upfitting. This consists of providing all relevant equipment such as lights, sirens, decals, as well as the installation of all the communications and technology equipment. This will be done through an existing City of Tempe contract handled by MHQ. For the upfitting of the three patrol vehicles, that comes to $72,354.09. And for the upfitting of two canine vehicles, that comes to $52,589.40. The difference is there relates to the canines require a cage and a heat warning system for the dogs. And funding is available for these items within our FY 2019 budget. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
The three non-canine vehicles, they'll have prisoner cages as well?
Yes.
Okay. Mary, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, then I'll ask for Resolution Number 3139, please.
Resolution Number 3139. Ordinance, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting bids from various vendors for the installation of up-fit equipment for five police pursuit vehicles, authorizing expenditure of public funds for the purpose of providing the upfit of vehicles, and authorizing execution of contracts with or purchase order to various vendors.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the passage of ordinance number 3139 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get, please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, the next item is I3, Resolution 5191.
Good day, Mayor. Our department has applied for and was awarded a grant through Operation Stone Garden program, as you all are aware. These grant funds were previously accepted through a Resolution 5161. We requested the mayor and council award a contract of courtesy Chevrolet in the amount not to exceed $37,781.27 for the purchase of one 2019 Chevy Tahoe 4x4 vehicle. A request of the upfitting and installation of all equipment will be submitted separately. The unit to be purchased, the unit is to be purchased using funds received from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for Operation Stone Garden. This purchase will be made through Arizona State Contract, which is good through March 31st of 2020. This vehicle will be solely used for Operation Stone Garden assignments and will lessen the burden on our existing fleet and vehicles on a replacement list. It should be noted that this vehicle will not be added to our vehicle replacement list. However, it will be maintained by fleet for regular service needs. Once the vehicle is no longer serviceable, we will not be replacing it. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Oh, wait, hold on. I know this is for Stone Garden. Can we only use it for Stone Garden?
Yes.
Okay. Bob?
Will it be equipped consistent with the ones we just talked about?
It'll be exact, put the exact same.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, any questions?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions, then I'll call for reading the Resolution 5191, please.
Resolution Number 5191, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from courtesy Chevrolet to provide a 2019 Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicle, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $37,781.27, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of Resolution Number 5191 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 5191. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we'll move to item J1, Consider Approving the Appointments of the Casa Grande Youth Commission with Terms to Extend Through June 30th of 2020. I'll pass that over to Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Any of them here tonight? One?
Yeah, I think so.
I think? She's sitting right behind somebody.
There she is.
And I'm sorry...
Thank you for being here.
What's your name?
Gracie.
Gracie, okay, sorry. I'm just learning everybody's name for the new year. Thank you for coming tonight. So along with Gracie, we have six reappointments from our former youth commission. Jasmine Oku, I'm sorry, Jasmine Moreno, Nena Okuwagou, Adriana Guerra, Evan Chaparro, Alora Lenahan, and Melanie Nagel. Our new members, Hunter Scholes, Renell Alado, Lucretia Galicia, Chloe Torres, Gracie Anala...
Hi.
Delaney Dickey, Tara Lynch, and Naraya Pareja. So they have all been interviewed and selected by their peers on the youth commission, and they all handle that. And we are having our annual retreat on August, I'm going to get the right date, 3rd and 4th. And this year, we're having a lot of our retreat at the new Recreation Center. So we reserve the community room, and so we're pretty excited about that, and we'll have a lot of new activities we can do. And thanks to Steve and his staff, they're helping us out quite a bit. So we'll see you there. Thanks for coming tonight. So with that, I turn it back over to you, Mayor, for the official...
Okay, well...
I think you did a good job with the names.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Gracie, thank you for volunteering. Really appreciate it, and thank you for being here tonight. All right, so, did I make a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, please.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the appointments to the Casa Grande Youth Commission as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, great. Thank you, Matt. And J2 is Consider Approving the Appointment of Michael, and I'm not going to butcher his last name, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with the term to expire on February 1st. Is Michael here tonight? There he is.
He is, very good.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for volunteering. Appreciate it, and look forward to your helping Mr. Hardesty out over here. Great.
Good.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Michael for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mary?
Aye.
All right.
Close one, Michael.
Any opposed? Okay, close vote, but you're in. Thank you again for volunteering.
Appreciate it, you bet.
All right, we'll move to item L, L1, which is a public hearing to Consider Ordinance And this is, Mr. Tice, you and your staff, your crack staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. James Gagley already will be making the presentation this evening.
Oh, okay. James, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So the request in front of you this evening is a zone change for property located on a parcel at the southeast corner of Cortson and Treckle. As you see identified in that white outline is the subject parcel. It's five acres in size. And currently, the zoning of that five acres is in two different zone districts. The northern portion is B2, and the southern portion of that five-acre parcel is in CO. And both of those are commercial zone districts. The proposed zone district for those five acres is to go from B2 and CO to R2 zoning, which is a medium-density residential zone district. The reason for the zone change request is the applicant is seeking to develop an 88-plus-room single-story skilled nursing facility. The reason why R2 is being requested is because in neither the B2 nor the CO zone districts, skilled nursing facilities are allowed. It can only be accommodated in other zone districts, such as the R2 zone, which is conditionally permitted. The R2 zone district is, like I say, considered a medium-density residential zone district, and there's a number of principally permitted uses, such as single-family, two-family, and three-family residential development. Single-family, two-family, and three-family dwellings would typically not require a major site plan approval process that's considered by Planning Commission. However, the R2 zone district also allows four-family residential... However, the R two zone district also allows four-family residential and townhouse clusters, which would require Planning Commission approval through a major site plan. But the R two district also allows a number of conditionally permitted uses through the approval of a conditional use permit considered by Planning Commission. And those types of uses include group homes, assisted living facilities, and skilled nursing facilities, like what the applicant is seeking to develop here. Other conditional uses would be churches and schools in the R two zone. When we sent out public notification for this proposed zone change, we received a number of comments from the adjacent Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood. And I just wanna discuss some of the bullet points that, that reflect the comments that were received. There was opposition to certain uses. People definitely didn't wanna see multi-family. A lot of people had requested that there be a limit of height at twenty feet. There was concern about the proximity of parking areas to the backs of the homes. There was also some questioning with regard to the type of landscaping and screening to be created between Cottonwood Ranch and this new development. I do wanna point out that if you see on this aerial photo, the Cottonwood Ranch development goes a little bit past the back wall along that western boundary. There's a thirty-foot-wide existing landscape buffer. And so there was a lot of discussion with regard to how would the development on this five-acre parcel relate to the Cottonwood Ranch development, especially given that there's that thirty-foot-wide landscape buffer that's sitting there currently without any sort of wall or screening. There was also discussion regarding pedestrian access concerns regarding the Cottonwood Ranch Open Space Park that you see to the right, and the development of this particular five-acre site. And then there was also discussion with regard to the location of the emergency access road that would be developed to serve this five-acre parcel. So as a result of those concerns, staff came up with a list of recommended conditions that would be imposed on this zone district that would help minimize those concerns and help make this a compatible site with the Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood. And I'll walk through those with you. The first recommended condition is that, except for single-family dwellings on individual lots, a major site plan shall be required to be considered for approval by the Planning Commission prior to the construction of any use on this property. And just as a side note, single-family dwellings would end up ultimately going to Planning Commission anyway because it would likely need to be platted, and so they would, they would review that. The second recommended condition is that development is limited to single-story structures with a maximum height of twenty feet for principally permitted uses, and a maximum height of twenty-eight feet for conditionally permitted uses. And so basically, what that would mean is that any sort of single-family, two-family, three-family, four-family dwelling would be limited to a height of twenty feet and single-story. Conditionally approved uses like churches or the skilled nursing facility would still be limited to a single story, but it would be allowed to have a height of twenty-eight feet. Just as an aside, the R two, without this type of condition imposed, would allow a maximum height of thirty-five feet, the same as Cottonwood Ranch. The third condition that staff is recommending is that all buildings other than accessory shall be set back a minimum distance of seventy-five feet from this property's south and east boundary. Accessory structures shall have a minimum setback of twenty feet. So what that would look like is it would create a building envelope, as you see in gray on the screen. It would be pushed in a way to afford a seventy-five-foot distance from the Cottonwood Ranch boundary. And then in terms of the north boundary and the west boundary, there'd be a twenty-foot setback, which is required in the R two. And then also, there is a recommended condition that there be a minimum twenty-foot landscape buffer to be provided along the property's south and east boundaries, as you see highlighted on the screen there. Quantity, minimum spacing, and the variety of landscaping, as well as any type of wall design and placement, shall be determined at the time of the major site plan or the preliminary landscape plan when it goes in front of Planning Commission. And again, why that's important is because that landscape buffer, especially along the east boundary of the site, would abut the Cottonwood Ranch Open Space Parcel Track P, so it would effectively create a fifty-foot-wide landscape buffer along the longest part of the parcel. The fifth condition is, is that at the time of the major site plan, the Planning Commission shall determine the appropriate access control and screening measures between Cottonwood Ranch and this subject property. This is a picture of that open space park that belongs to Cottonwood Ranch, looking south. And as you can see, its relationship does require some attention at the time of major site plan to ensure that there's appropriate screening or access control. The sixth recommended condition is that four-sided architecture shall be required, which is to include the use of masonry, door and window details, such as popouts, recesses, or ledges, and wall articulation on all sides of principal buildings. The seventh condition is that, prior to any development, the subject property shall be placed in its own parcel or parcels to be completely contained within the new R two zone boundary. And the last condition has to deal with access, 'cause as you see, these five acres are not immediately adjacent to either Treacle nor Cortson. And so essentially, what the condition requires is that vehicular, utility, and emergency access easements to the property where needed, meeting city standards, shall be recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits on this property. And I should make a note that currently, property between this parcel and Treacle and Cortson are all owned by the same owner, so there's no issue establishing that access. But we wanna ensure that it gets created before we issue building permits.
Would you go to both roads?
That would be potentially considered at the time of the major site plan. So when considering zone changes, there's review criteria that have to be addressed. And these are the two review criteria that was determined to be met. The first criteria is that the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including the goals, policies, and applicable elements. So one of the goals of the general plan is to encourage compatible uses. And staff sees that R two zoning, a medium-density residential district, is a good opportunity to introduce a more compatible zone district next to the Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood, as opposed to what it's currently designated as commercial. And with that, there are some potential land use conflicts, depending on what develops. And so we feel that the recommended eight conditions helps mitigate that. An applicable element is that the R two zone is permitted in that area's land use designation of neighborhoods, and it also leads to minimal infrastructure cost because it utilizes existing roadways and utilities. And residential development within this five-acre parcel would well be under the allowed eighteen dwelling units per acre. Given that this site is less than twenty-five acres, you can have up to eighteen dwelling units per acre. And so development on these five acres would fall well underneath that level of density. The second criteria is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs and residence of the city. So the applicant who is seeking to develop this site as a skilled nursing facility is affiliated with Oasis, which is located off of Rodeo. And he's determined that, you know, the needs of the city right now do call for additional space to provide skilled nursing. And so staff agrees that this is an appropriate use, and it would meet the needs of the community. And it's also an opportunity to provide infill without expanding on streets and utilities, as I mentioned. As far as the notification process goes, there was notification in the Casa Grande dispatch for both the Planning Commission hearing and the city council hearing. And notices were mailed identifying the dates of both hearings to three hundred feet surrounding the parcel, including notification to the Cottonwood Ranch HOA, and there was a sign posted at the site by the applicant. And it was from that notification that we received the comments and responses that we did. I've identified on the map here, seven properties whose owners had provided comments, just so you can see how that was displaced throughout the Cottonwood Ranch neighborhood. And there was a public hearing held on June sixth, and there was a number of Cottonwood Ranch residents who attended and who, who provided questions and, and comment. And that is reflected in the minutes that were included in your packets. And as a result of that public hearing, Planning Commission made a recommendation that city council approve this zone change, subject to the conditions of record that I previously discussed with you and is reflected in the ordinance for your consideration this evening. But I'd be happy to clarify any of these eight conditions if you'd like. Should this zone change be approved, the next step for the applicant is to go forward with a major site plan and conditional use permit for the skilled nursing facility. Both of those are currently under review. It would be just subject to the approval of the zone change. And the scheduling for that public hearing would, is yet to be determined, but it would be scheduled somewhat in the near future. And that concludes my presentation this evening on the proposed zone change.
What else goes on that property?
On the five acres?
Yeah, no, on the, not on the five, the bigger, uh, it's, yeah, the whole portion itself. I know it's, it's, uh, B two and C O. Is there any plans now for development in, in that?
There, there are no current plans for what to do with the remnant of that parcel, but it would remain, the southern portion would be zoned C O, which is commercial office. It really doesn't allow uses such as retail and restaurant. It would be more of like a professional office use there on the south. And then the remnant of the B two is a general business. There's no specific proposal at this time, but that would allow neighborhood-scale commercial restaurants, retail.
Did you say the entire, the entire area there is, is owned by one owner?
There is an exception. There's two little out parcels.
I saw those. I wondered about them.
Right. Yeah, and that, that is not owned by the ownership.
Is there any feedback from them? Are they okay with it, or?
They received notification as a result of that three-hundred-foot notice, but I did not receive any comments.
Well, with the, the things that you made that had to adapt meet with people that were concerned about it?
Generally, they were satisfied with the conditions with the, with the people that I spoke with directly, particularly after the Planning Commission meeting. They appreciated the fact that, knowing that really what was driving the zone change was a skilled nursing facility, helped settle their concerns. And of course, going forward with any sort of development on this site, there'll be additional public notification to ensure that their comments are addressed.
Yeah, James, I have a question for you. So how does the, how's the potential owner of this piece of property? How do they feel? They feel that the restrictions that we're gonna put on them are fair?
They were given what staff was recommending as the, as the eight conditions, and they, and there is an applicant here tonight to speak to that.
Okay.
But my sense was that they were okay with it. And then they were also, they also had the opportunity to address that at Planning Commission, and they were okay with those.
Okay. I know, I know the...
Can I have any comments?
Sure. Can I finish?
Oh, I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
I'll call on you, Mary. 'Cause I'm aware of Oasis. I mean, they're a neighbor of mine in Matt's. I mean, they live, they're across the street from us, and they're, they do a nice job, a very good part of the neighborhood. So I think that area and it backing up to the homes should give the homeowners some sense of a little bit more knowledge about what's gonna go in there, 'cause it was all zoned commercial to begin with. So I, I would have, if it was me, I'd be happy to know that that's going in there. 'Cause I, and I, again, knowing the, knowing the operation, they're a good operator. So, yeah. Matt?
James, I wanna say, your presentations are always well thought out, detailed, and answer most questions, so good job there. But yeah, to just kinda echo, I was gonna say that, I mean, I know that we're only voting on the zone change tonight and not necessarily the, the skilled nursing, but I, again, they've been, I remember when they cited the last one on Rodeo. It was quite a big outcry, too, and now it's, it's great, no one, you know. So they're, this group is good, and if we see that in the future, or if the, the Planning Commission will see that in the future. So I, I like this zone change, and again, it's better than taking the risk of leaving it commercial, and then you've got a grocery store unloading trucks right behind the houses or, or something like that. So I think it's a good transitional use, and I'm glad that you guys have the conditions worked out. Thank you.
Mary, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, you know, kind of reiterate what you and Matt had just, um, complimented Herman said. And also that, you know, I, I reuse those letters again, and I want to say how much I appreciate it the tone and the timber of those letters. There was concern, and all, they were very specific. They listed their, not only their concerns, but suggestions, and specifically what they would wish to see and not see. And I truly believe that, that with these conditions, that it has met those concerns. Nothing's always perfect, but again, I'm hoping that it will be a skilled nursing facility. This is something that we need in our community, and I think it will allow the peers, the neighbors, and that it will go well with, in that community there.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Bob, you had a comment, question?
I just have a question about the process. Ultimately, I, I have that, that same question of, of is the applicant generally accepting of those restrictions that have been put on there? But, but my, my actual question is, how, how are those, how do we come to those list of restrictions on this or any project? I appreciate that we got letters and comments from some of the people that live in the area. But do we, do we automatically go through and start dictating conditions? Or is that something that's negotiated with the, with the applicant? And like I said, ultimately, I, I wanna know that the applicant is, is, I guess, accepting of those restrictions. I don't wanna put too many, too many restrictions on their, on their project and make it difficult or cost prohibitive, 'cause I think this is a great project in the right spot. I, I think it fits perfect, so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huddleston, I'll try to answer that question for you. You know, as we craft conditions of record to try to improve compatibility between a new land use and the existing land uses, how we, how we, the, the actual specifics of those conditions really vary depending on the context of the, of the situation and what the specific concerns are from the neighborhood. For example, in this case, one of the concerns that they raised was, well, how does this relate to our, our private open space? Right? Are these people just gonna walk and enter our private open space, and how are you gonna handle that? So that's not a typical kind of concern. I mean, building height, massing, setbacks, all really typical. But this one was kinda unique. But to answer your question is, we, we tailor those conditions of record over essentially years of negotiating these kinds of projects and understanding how you can really address the neighbors' concerns through fairly simple development modification, right? 'Cause what, what the issues with development typically are, Balkan scale, how close the buildings are to me, how tall they're going to be. We know how tall, you know, this developer needed for his building, for his assisted living. We had that conversation. Does twenty-eight feet work for you? Yeah. Does twenty-four work? No, right? So we know that. We know that for a single family, a single story, twenty feet is fine. It works. It's, it's no problem meeting a twenty-foot limit for a single family. You know, the buffers, the seventy-five feet and the fifty feet, those are kinda standard of buffer kind of setbacks. But we also know... But we also know that the accessory structures can go closer. So, a lot of times what someone will do is put their parking near the perimeter and put like shade structures, car parks over, that the parking could be under, that has a lesser setback. So, they're not sterilizing that first 75 feet. So, you know, basically, it's, it's a practical experience with, with literally, you know, hundreds of these kinds of projects that allow us to really fine tune these kinds of conditions in a way that works for both neighbors and minimizes, you know, addresses their concerns and still works with developers without being unreasonable.
And Paul, if I can also add to that. Prior to the applicant submitting their zone change application, there was both a very informal sit-down pre-application meeting with them, as well as a more formal development team meeting. Whereas Paul said, we had an opportunity to sort of both collaboratively look at the site, and, and they were well aware that there would be some potential concerns placing development that close to Cottonwood Ranch. You know, that neighborhood's been around there for about 20 years. And so, any type of use would present some discomfort, knowing that all of a sudden that field is going to have development. So, they, they were well aware, and they were also eager to suggest compatibility measures. So, it was very collaborative between what staff arrived at and, as well as what the applicant proposed.
Okay. And the applicants here?
Yes.
Can we hear from them, or him, or her?
Can I make comments?
Just want to get your confirmation, you guys are comfortable with the direction.
We are comfortable with it. We are, we believe we meet all the conditions that were provided, and we're, one of our top priorities since the start has been the relationship of the facility to our neighbors. So, already, we've been planning that 75-foot buffer from the beginning.
Okay.
And we also plan on, while we are submitting for our major site plan, to meet with the homeowners there, hold the neighborhood meeting, get more of their thoughts, maybe get some feedback on the relationship they want to see between that park and our facility. So, yeah.
Okay. Maybe negotiate use of their park. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, what's your name and who do you represent?
My name's Natalie Griffin. I'm with EPS Group.
All right. Thank you, Natalie. Does anybody else have a question?
Yeah. Well, just a comment, thank you for being so, you know, supportive and wanting to work with the neighborhood. It's important, and Councilmember Powell brings this up all the time, that the neighborhood's there first. You know, so you want to make sure that, you know, if we can, you know, work with the neighbors, it'd be great. But, you know, this process is so important. You know, we have these public hearings for a reason, and to get people's feedback. And so, you know, I was really happy to hear kind of like what Councilmember Cortson said, it's great to have the feedback and get what the people, you know, the neighbors are, are asking for. And I think, you know, as far as the conditions, you know, I think they were all fair and reasonable. I mean, you know, like you said, it seemed, most of them were pretty, you know, I mean, not basic, but common. So, they were, you know, so if it, it makes the neighbors happy and the builder, you know, developer happy, you know, why not, you know, put it in a condition? So, but, you know, I just want to encourage people, you know, when we have these public hearings, please come. I mean, I think it's, it's important to come to these agreements, and, and we appreciate you and your support of that, that whole process. So.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Okay. Mary, any more comments?
No, that's it.
All right. This is a public hearing, so I do, I will open the floor to the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this subject? I will open the floor now. If you are, please step forward and state your name and address.
And Mayor, as, as we wait for the flock of people to come up and discuss it this evening, I do want to bring up one point of clarification, and that is, the conditions, as Mr. Gagliardi showed them, are all correct. They're the ones that are in the ordinance. We did make a slight modification to condition five from how it appeared at the Planning Commission. So, if you look at your request for council action, what the Planning Commission actually approved says, "The site design shall address the concern regarding pedestrian access between the subject site and Cottonwood Ranch Track P." In my discussions with Mr. Gagliardi, and to provide some additional assurance as to how that process would work to the applicant, we simply modified the condition to say when, that it would happen at the time of major site plan. So, just want to make sure that that, that the applicant obviously knows that, as well as the members in public that might want to discuss it.
Okay. Thank you, Brett. Anyone here to speak on this subject? Okay. Well, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and call for ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance. Ordinance number 1178.133.1. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from general business, B2 and commercial office, CO to multi-family residential R2 on property located east of Trackle Road and south of Cortson Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.133.1 as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
I'm going to abstain.
All right, good job. Thank you.
Shouldn't affect the vote, right?
Not sure. It shouldn't, at this point, it looks like it's already, it's already passed.
Yeah. Okay. Next item on the agenda is L2, public hearing for our final budget property tax levy.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, we have a public hearing for the fiscal year 20, final budget and property tax levy for the fiscal year ending June 30th to 2020. On June 17th, the mayor and council did pass the tentative budget. There are, there have been no substantial changes since that time. I do have some slides to just recap the budget for you. One thing to note is that, following the regular meeting, we do have a special meeting where council will be asked to consider the adoption through a resolution. And then, the property tax levy tonight is only a public hearing. The council will be asked to adopt the first read of the property tax levy on, at a special meeting on July 22nd. So, it is just a, a public hearing tonight.
Okay, so there's no action from the council's part?
No. There will be a request for this, for the final budget during the special meeting following this, but not on the property tax.
Okay.
So, with all budget presentations, we do start with a recap of our mission statement to provide a safe and pleasant community for all citizens. This year, the staff really took a hard look at the vision statement, our commitment to customer service, and the five city council focus areas of education, fiscal responsibility, infrastructure, marketing, and quality of life. And what we did was, we established an action plan which was, which was used in developing our fiscal year 20 operating budget. Some of the highlights, we are recommending a final budget of $179,383, $383,194. That is the same amount that we brought to you as the tentative budget. Our fiscal year 20 expenditure limitation set by the Department of Revenue is 229 million, so we're well underneath that. The proposed budget does contemplate the property tax levy of 4.4 million, with $782,000 dedicated to paying down our public safety retirement unfunded liability for pensions. The budget is focused on maintaining current levels of general fund services, and we have some personnel assumptions, which include the implementation of the new pay scale, merit increases, net increases in public safety retirement, and Arizona State Retirement, as well as our new employee benefit plan. Staffing assumptions include a net increase of one position, but that is grant funded through CDBG. And then, we have a number of vacant positions, which are authorized but not funded for the upcoming year based on needs. And then, we have $22.9 million contemplated as capital improvement projects. Of those capital improvement projects, about $13 million, or 57%, is dedicated to infrastructure. The next largest piece is hardware and software at 12%, but that is predominantly the public safety radio program, which exists in three departments, communications, police, and fire. We've also highlighted a number of projects, the main library expansion, which Mr. Hardesty talked about earlier, and then the renovation of the vacant lots, general plan, the airport master plan, the comp and class studies, citizen survey, and the Union Pacific Railroad Art Project. And we highlighted those because those are great opportunities to engage our citizens and our residents and, and hearing what they want to see in those, those items. Just to look at our, our trends and our expenditure budgets, this shows you that fiscal year 2020 is pretty much in line with the last seven years. We generally come in at a budget of about 177 to 179 million. And then, the last bar is the fiscal year 20 expenditure limitation. So, we're well underneath that. The tentative budget, as well as the final budget, which would be posted tomorrow if you, if you do approve the final budget, is given to the residents in our schedules, our official schedules. This is a representation of Schedule A, and what we've done here is, we've broken down the different forms into graphs and charts in the next slides. But just to walk you through this, it starts off with taking a look at our fiscal year 19 budget, which was 178 million dollars. We look at our actual expenditures, and we forecast our fund balances of July 1. And then, we take a look at our forecasted revenues, property tax, both primary and secondary, our operating revenues, and then other financing sources. Should we look at potential bonds and things? Once you add that up, we have approximately $253 million in resources. We do set aside about $25 million in the general fund, as the, the council has, has given us direction to put 50% away or restrict that, 50% of general fund expenditures each year, just as a, a financial stability tool. And so, we'll kind of dive into each of these, mostly into the general fund, because that's our, our largest portion of unrestricted funds that we use to fund our, our daily operations. So, this is Schedule C. This really shows our general fund revenues by source. We have $50.8 million in general fund operating revenues for fiscal year 20. There are three main large components to that. Local taxes come, equates to about 47%, intergovernmental 33%, and the primary property tax 9%. We actually break this down by source on the next slide, showing you that the transaction privilege tax, or the city sales tax, equals $22 million. The income tax, or the urban revenue sharing portion, is 7.3 million. State shared sales tax is 5.8. Primary property tax that we have modeled is 4.4. And then, we have auto and lieu, or vehicle license tax, at 3.5 million. Franchise fees at 1.8. And then, the intergovernmental grant portion that goes into the general fund is $222,000. This is our truth and taxation, taxation analysis that we do every year. What we do is, we look at our current levy, and then look at our net assessed values to determine what would the levy be if we wanted to stay consistent with the current year. And so, that would be $3.6 million as far as the property tax levy. When you look at our net assessed values, that equates to .9225 per $100 of net assessed value. So, basically, what that says is that a resident who owns a $100,000 home would pay $92.25 annually for, towards the primary property tax. The other two scenarios that we look at are, one is staying under a dollar, so we model .9999. That equates to a primary property tax of about $3.9 million. And a, that rate of .999 would mean that a resident who owns a home worth $100,000 would pay $99.99 annually. So, that's $7.78 more than the current property tax levy. And then, the last scenario that we take a look at is the maximum levy. So, the Arizona revised statute sets the limit that we can assess for primary, primary property tax, and that's set at $4.4 million, based on our net assessed values. That would give us a rate of $1, 1.1244 per $100 of value. So, a resident who owned a home valued at $100,000 would pay $112.44 annually, which is $20.19 more than the current levy. Just to kind of give you context of our, our property rates, we do show the primary property tax rate here, plus the secondary property tax rate at each of the different scenarios. The first column is the current tax rate. So, in the current year, our tax rate is .9905, and our secondary property tax rate, which is set based on our general obligation debt, is .6010 for a combined total of $1.59. And what you'll see in each of the scenarios going forward is that each of them are actually less than the current tax rate, and that's really driven by property tax values, property net assessed values going up. And then, it shows you, based on a $100,000 home, what the resident would end up paying. Current tax rate, $159.15, and then, option 1, 2, and 3 at 111.97, 127.42, and 139.96. The table right below that gives it to you in property tax levy dollars. So, currently, we levy a primary and secondary property tax that equals $5.7 million. So, under scenario 1, our combined property tax levy would be 4.675. Under scenario 2, 4.977. And scenario 3, 5.463. So, again, all of those scenarios are under our current property tax rate for the current year. This is a breakdown of our property tax bill that we received from Pinal County. Just to show you what portion is attributable to the city, approximately 7% of your property tax bill is driven by the city portion, and then 13% is other, things like CFDs, Special Assessment Districts. 16% is from the Central Arizona College, 26% from the county, and then 38% from the school districts. That kind of sums up the discussion on the revenues, and this kind of ties it together with going forward and looking at the expenditures. Because we are a municipality, we are required to have a, a budget that is balanced. So, revenues or resources available are lower than expenses. So, this just shows you operating revenues versus all expenditures. So, you can see the darker bar, which is revenues, and the orange bar, which is expenditures. How do we balance that budget? And basically, what we do is, we have a planned use of fund, fund balance. So, in any year that our revenues exceed our expenditures, that becomes fund balance, and pretty much that's restricted for a one-time use or capital improvement. And so, you can see that makes a lot of sense. So, the capital project fund is, is where you see the largest delta. Expenditures by service areas, so if you look at all expenditures, which includes capital, operating debt across all funds, the largest piece is in general government, and then public safety, public works, community services, and then planning and community development. So, this is a, a look at the full 179 million dollars. If we just look at the general fund portion of that, what you'll see is that our major investment is in public safety. About $28 million of our general fund expenditures are driven by public safety, so that's communications, fire, police, and court. General government is 10.7, community services 7.3, planning and development at 2.2, and then the general fund portion of public works at about 1.3 million. And that really makes sense if you consider our mission statement about providing a, a safe environment for our, our residents. We're really focused on that public safety portion. We are a service organization, so one of our largest operating expenses is personnel. So, we break that down for you here. And the general fund personnel expense actually accounts for 73% of, of all general fund expense. So, we did have a number of changes. One, the public safety tech coordinator moved from the finance, moved from communications to the finance and IT department. We did have an increase, one new code enforcement officer, which is general, which is funded through CDBG money. Community services took a look at their, their resources and consolidated a number of duties at the Dorothy Powell Senior Services, Senior Center. And so, we actually have a net decrease of one position. And then, for the fire department, we had the addition of one firefighter rover, which is their sixth rover. So, net after all those changes is really one FTE increase, but that was funded by the CDBG grant. So, we like to highlight our pension costs and merit increases and those types of things that really have an effect on the budget. So, what you'll see is, we had a net increase of 5.25% in our pension costs, our pension rates, which equates to about $270,000 increase in what we had over last year. The Arizona State Retirement, or ASRS, had a .3% increase, which equates to about $47,000 of additional expense. And then, we did model a merit increase based on our new pay scale. So, those... So those who would be eligible for an increase, that costs 610,000 dollars in wages and salaries and 809, fully loaded with the different fringe benefits that are included. The personnel expense is approximately 43 million dollars across all funds. What you'll see is the general fund accounts for 82% of that, so 35 million dollars. And the circle or the donut chart just kind of gives you an idea of how we break that down. So 28 million is wages and salaries. Retirement costs are 7.5 between both PSPRS and ASRS. Healthcare costs, which is predominantly our medical plan, is 4.6 million or 11%. And then other benefit costs are about 2.3, and that's social security and things like workers' comp that we pay on behalf of our employees. Key dates, just to kind of look backwards for a moment. The council did pass the tentative budget on June 17, and we did post that to our city website on the 19th. We did publications in the newspaper for both the truth and taxation and the tentative budget on the date shown. And then upcoming, we do have this public hearing for both the budget and the property tax. Then we have the special meeting directly after the regular meeting tonight. And we will post, if the council adopts the final budget, we will post that to our website tomorrow. And then the first read for the property tax levy will be July 22, and the final read would be August 5. And with that, I know I talked kind of fast. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mary, do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Matt.
I wanted to make a couple of points that we've made before, but the new employee is a grant-funded position, which will only be renewed if we get the grant again, so we're not going to carry that over.
That's correct.
The other thing is, we talked about property tax tonight, and I was wondering if we had come up with a display of our property tax rate over the last 10 years, 15 years, and our comparison to our neighbors, specifically our primary property tax rate.
I do have that analysis. I apologize, I did not bring it tonight.
But we could have it at the next hearing. And so one of the things I wanted to be clear, because I've been talking to a lot of people in town and talking to people about property taxes, is one of the proposals, and we're not voting on this tonight, but a proposal is if the property taxes raised at that extra point would go to fund our public safety retirement system debt. And the thing there that people keep saying is, man, the city really mismanaged this the whole time. And to that, I say, we are statutorily required by the state of Arizona to participate in that fund. We do not manage it as a city. This is the same organization that mortgages their own buildings to pay their bills. So that's who's running our public safety retirement system. It is not the city. We are obligated and required by law to participate in this fund that is managed by the state of Arizona. And I've done a lot of research and I have a lot of stuff online. You can look in the papers about what's been going on with the public safety retirement system.
Show that one, that slide, public safety.
Yeah, and so...
See the top two numbers there?
Yes.
43 and 52. That means that that fund is funded, 43% of that fund is funded, 52% of that's funded, which means we have huge deficits. The neighborhood has about 48 million dollars now.
And when I go, and we all go to our conferences that we go to, one of the big things that I've been to is the public safety retirement system presentations. And Scott Barber did a really good one a couple of years ago, and I go to it every year. And the thing is, we are obligated at this point to fulfill those already. We can't do anything about what we owe through no fault of our own, but we are obligated to our employees who've done a great job for us to pay that. And they have changed a lot of things over the years as to how that is funded and how the contribution rates are to improve it. But the fact remains is, we still owe so much, and we're trying to get that figured out. And again, to reiterate, the city of Casa Grande does not manage the public safety retirement system for the state of Arizona, though we are statutorily required to participate in that plan. So, again, I would also like to see our property tax rate history, because it has gone down a lot of times too, or a few times over the past years, also compared to our neighbors with their districts as well, because a lot of our neighbors have a fire district that's not including their property taxes. And just for comparison, because people always compare us to other cities around us, so I want to get the full picture. And then, yep, Maricopa's a lot higher when you put everything together. And so the other thing is, does this affect business? Because I've gotten this question a lot. Does this affect a business property the same as it affects residential? Is it straight percentage, or is it more?
It does not, actually. Those are based on, I don't want to say a scale, but there's a...
A different valuation, yeah. And that's what people have been asking me, and that's what I'm trying to explain, is how that affects business owners too. So if we could have that as well. Thank you. And that's all I'll say.
Mary, any comments?
No, no, I totally agree with what Mr. Herman said. And if all things are wrong, then they should vote.
Nationwide.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I will open the floor for comments regarding our fiscal year 2019-20 final budget and property tax levy.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember John McGuire, 9:41 East Penny Lane for the moment anyways. Couple weeks, it'll be different. But pretty much, I'm going to echo a lot with what Councilmember Herman was just saying. This is another one of these issues where I get frustrated, because the public outcry and much easier ways to vent is so extreme at times. You know, the voices of, we shouldn't pay another nickel in taxes ever for any reason, whatever, and politicians are all a bunch of crooks, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Yet, when the information is provided over and over and over again that this will be an opportunity for the participation to take place, we have three people in the audience tonight. Now, I'm hopeful that you receive communications in other ways, hopefully, from a reasonable amount of people, but my experience tells me that's probably not so true. And I understand completely where we are, come from a public safety background, and you know, whether we agree or disagree with the way the fund was managed. And I've tried to explain over and over to people that there have been changes made now in the system to try to prevent this sort of deficit from occurring again. But we don't have a lot of choices here. And if we don't do this, we'll get sued, and there's already been other cases where they've won those cases. So then we just spend money on legal fees for no real reason. So this is probably as good a time as any to take a stab at it. I have no idea what your comments are going to be on the 22nd about which of the three options we take. And I do agree that it'd be nice to have some of the other information that Councilmember Herman asked for, but we really don't have a lot of choice. Somehow, we got to fix this, and this seems to be, to me, a good time to do it. And, you know, and I do, I just come across with the final point that if people are going to complain and complain and complain and say, we shouldn't do this, they should be here. That's just the way I feel. And, you know, again, hopefully, they have communicated with you in other ways, but if it's such an important issue, get their three minutes in front of you. That's what I think. Have a good day.
Thank you, John. Anyone else in the audience? Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to reports. Lisa, I want to start with you.
Sure. Not too much. I just wanted to, I know the mayor and I and city manager, we met with Fernando Garcia, our economic development, whatever his title is, specialist. Had a meeting with a group called Chicanos Por La Casa, and it was a great meeting. I was really, really happy that you guys took that initiative to meet with them, and I think they told us that, you know, they met Fernando at a conference, and they were talking about some of the things that we have going out there. But I don't know about you, Mayor, but I was just impressed with what their vision is and how they can help the city of Casa Grande. It's an organization that's been in the Phoenix area. Actually, it's not even Phoenix, Arizona, New Mexico, Nevada, and Texas. You know, their mission is to empower lives. And part of that, you know, they have four areas of impact, health and human services, housing, economic development, and education. And so when we met with them, they were trying to see how they can partner with the city and what they can do to help us, you know, empower, you know, people in the community. So we were just really impressed with their vision and our vision and how we can work together. And so we identified three strategies of how we can maybe move forward in working with them. One was housing. We've been talking about housing as part of our strategic plan and everything with the homeless coalition, and so, you know, so important with affordable housing. And there's some great things that they're doing in these areas that can help, you know, whether, you know, housing counseling, neighborhood stabilization, single and multifamily housing projects, all kinds of things. Economic development, they do a lot of stuff with workforce development, education, you know, youth enrichment, scholarships. So we did talk about prioritizing those three and possibly partnering with them. So I was just really excited to see that, and I think it's an organization that's reputable, that's been around. And when we talk about, you know, diversity and providing opportunities for all our citizens, I think this is an organization that can really help us. So I was just really pleased with that meeting, and I look forward to working with them.
Yeah, and there is kind of a bit of a misnomer, maybe based on the name, that Chicanos Por La Casa is just for Latinos. It's not. They've gone mainstream. So they're there to help anybody.
Right.
So that was good. I'm going to go next. I just want to thank staff, especially Steve, your staff, for the fireworks show on 4th of July. It was amazing, as usual. In fact, the last finale was incredible. So you please pass along our thanks to them. I know that it was hot out there, because I did make an appearance, but it was very short. But did appreciate everything that they did out there. I don't have a lot of either, just really working on a bunch of different projects. We've got the 347 overpass in Maricopa is opening next Saturday on the 13th. Not that people in Casa Grande care too much about their overpass, but it's a big deal for Maricopa. It's huge. So I'm going to be at the ribbon cutting for that. That'll be interesting to see the final product. We also have a ribbon cutting on a new business here in town. He's actually been here a little while, but it's for the Good Ruby Christian Bookstore. It's on next Friday at 9:45. They're located at 973 East Cottonwood. So if anybody wants to come by there, that should be a...
New owner?
Uh, yes. Yeah. And I guess we're going to get some updates on the Carmichael Park. If you haven't seen the park and driven by it lately, it's really taking shape. It's basically a brand-new park. I mean, it's brand-new. The only thing old is, and it's not old, is the skateboards and then the old baseball field. That's about it. Everything else is brand-new. We continue to work on water. That continues to be a concern, so several meetings on that. We've got the Edge Luncheon coming up. A meeting with somebody on a new hotel they want to build, so hopefully I'll have more information on that to share down the road. And then we'll be attending the State Transportation Board meeting up in Cottonwood to make sure that they don't take our money away, because somebody's going to try and move some dollars out of a fund that's supposed to be directed towards I-10 widening. Don't touch my cheese. Well, that's where they're going to take it from. Anyway. Yeah. So, Mr. Powell?
Well, I had planned to go to that meeting. I had a sick granddaughter that I couldn't, she was running a fever, and so I called up and told her, please tell my situation, and I appreciate it. But I'm kind of excited. I'm going up to Flagstaff for the next three days, and the natural resource conservation districts of Arizona are having a meeting up there. And then they, from that meeting, they send certain propositions on to the national to work with Congress and whatever. And I'm going to present on harvesting floodwater. And I'm going to pass you guys out of just a copy of what we've got here. But it...
Alternative water supply.
Yeah, alternative water supply. That's the, we really, I mean, they like to say we have enough water. We don't have enough water. We know that. And so if we could find a new source of water, it would really be something. And just the short part of it is, basically, you've got the Mississippi River with 19 billion dollars' worth of damage done from flooding. And you've got Pinal County with 40% of the fields that may have to be taken out of production and put aside because of lack of water. So it basically is trying to bring floodwater to Arizona, and it would be a pipeline that would be involved in it at one point. But it would, the hot gets hotter and the wet gets wetter. And so, as they say, I'll give you each a copy of what I've got here to read.
Are you done?
Yeah, I am. Thank you. Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. The one thing I was going to say is...
Hang on, hang on.
Is you owe my horses an apology for the fireworks. I sat out there with two mayors that were just running around the pen scared to death. They wouldn't talk to me for two days. Scared them so bad. But the, and then getting out of there is quite an adventure. But I got on.
All right, Mary?
Okay. Just a couple of things. I wanted to applaud the expansion of the main library. I know a lot of folks, this isn't really on merit, it's sort of thing, and some residents might question the expenditure when we've got other projects on board. But I wanted to point out that the money comes from our development capacity, and we're very limited to use these fees. And libraries, one of the few types that we can use now. And with meeting rooms and the study rooms and the computers and that, I think it's money well worth, well spent in that. And by continuing updating our libraries, we're going to keep up with the many and various new libraries and offers. Anyone can say, you know, you go into our libraries now, it's totally different from even 20 years ago. So I think this is a big deal. It's a big deal for our city. Another small thing, some more in the market, so recycling, moving to plastic water bottles and shipping cardboard. Some of the things I've been reading show that we do have a very real market in the U.S., these limited products. Maybe it's something that we can look at and have central areas where we can drop off, drop-off points, so that it would be limited now and employed through the city and that. And actually, those two items there are the biggest items that people recycle, is the plastic water bottles. And with all of the stream and everything that's going on now, you take a look at the recyclers, it would just budge, give them box after another. So I'm taking a look at that and going to try and pass that on with the mayor and our city manager and just to belated, happy July, 4th of July to everybody.
Okay. Matt?
Thank you. On a lighter note from my previous tirade, the CG Little League won, beat Maricopa in the finals in Casa Grande. So that's pretty cool. Cover 4th of July.
They just sucked their bad.
We had a chamber of commerce mixer at the new community center, which went very well. So it was a lot of fun, good turnout there, good food. And Steve and his staff did a great job and told about all of our numbers and everything, and everyone was really happy. And the more people we get in there, the more people are like, wow, this is really nice. So good job for you guys doing that. The United Way is partnering with the elementary school district to do a peanut butter and jelly drive, and there's a collection point here at City Hall, the schools, Chamber of Commerce, among other places. So they want peanut butter and jelly, so the kids can have lunch and food, and they give it to the kids to eat when they're not at school too. and they give it to the kids to eat when they're not at school too, so they have something good to eat. So if you have extra peanut butter and jelly, go buy some and drop it off.
And Matt, you can go to United Way of Pinal County and make a monetary donation also.
Thank you.
Three, 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 three.
Okay. And last, but just kind of a community thing, is the high school board is accepting applications for a vacancy. And that is until Friday, and you can apply, get the application online from the county superintendent's office. So if anyone's interested or knows anyone that's interested, there's a vacancy there. And that's all I have, that everyone else didn't cover. Thank you.
Bob? Sorry, I made you last.
Oh, that's fine. Uh, Mayor, thank you for, uh, asking me to, uh, take your place on the, on the CAG Board, Central Arizona Governments. Uh, I attended my first meeting a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, I, I guess there's going to be a learning curve. I, I, I didn't, uh, didn't catch on to a lot of things that they're covering. But, uh, representation from all over, uh, Pinal County and Hila County, uh, it seems like predominantly transportation projects. Uh, we did, uh, finish the process of selecting a new director. I do intend to, uh, attend the meetings regularly and stay on top of that. And I'll, I'll bring the, uh, any updates back to the council. But thank you for that. I'll poke and fun at you, but I, I'm going to enjoy it.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Anything else? Okay. All right. Um, seeing no more comments, then I think the next item on our agenda is to adjourn. So we'll adjourn the regular council meeting. And we will reconvene and call to order the special meeting of the Casa Grande City Council.
Yeah, five minutes or so.
Do you need five minutes? Sure, we can take five minutes. You have five minutes.